Okay, at this time, I'd like to bring the March PCOSN City School Board Meeting to order. And Jessie, would you please do the honors?
Madison Deaver is a seven-year-old student in Ms. Jaeger's second-grade class. She lives with her mom, dad, little brother Jacob, who is four and will come to the primary school next year, and her sister Kayla, who is 10 and attends the elementary school. She has a pet golden retriever named Bodie. Reading is her favorite subject in school, and outside of school, she loves to play field hockey or play with her brother and sister.
Good evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The inspirational reader is Kelsey Ensley. She is also a seven-year-old in Ms. Jaeger's second-grade class. She lives with her mom, dad, sister Mackenzie, who is 13, and her brother Jamie, who is four. She has six pets: four dogs, Ruger, Tanner, Jake, and Chase; and two cats, Molly and Pepper. Her favorite subjects in school are science and math. Outside of school, she loves to jump rope, go to the playground, or play outside with her sister.
Quotes by Dr. Seuss. Quotes by Dr. Seuss. "Open a book, open your imagination. You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes. You can steer yourself in any direction you choose. You are on your own and you know what you know. You are the guy who decide where to go. I like nonsense. It wakes up the brain cells. Fantasy is a necessary ingredient in living. It's a way of looking at life through the wrong end of a telescope," which is what I do. "And that enables you to laugh at life's realities."
Okay, thank you very much. That was a job well done. I'd also like to take this time to thank the kids for our invitations to the art show tomorrow night. Y'all show those. Very nice.
Very good.
Three o'clock to eight o'clock, three-thirty to eight o'clock. Thank you very much. That was very thoughtful. Do we have any additions or modifications?
We do not, this evening.
Okay, we're gonna move into recognitions. We have quite a few tonight. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, student presentation. Thank you. I'm jumping the gun. All right, student presentation. What I would like to say is, we'll do student presentation and recognitions, and if everybody can stick around for just a few minutes, we'll take an intermission, and the board would like to come out and meet everybody, so, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to trample on y'all's ground. All right, student presentation. The program is entitled Percussion and Reading, and will feature 12 students from Mrs. Jaeger's second-grade class, showing what they've recently learned about percussion. The students will be assisted by Mrs. Kim Poto, music teacher at PCOSN Primary School. After Ms. Poto explains about percussion instruments, the students will play the various instruments as she reads the story Mortimer by Robert N. Munch. Students participating in the presentation include Madison Deaver, Madison Dykstra, Stephanie Freeman, Michael Holt, Kelsey Ensley, Jake Mann, Jacob Pace, Beth Ann Pegram, Alyssa Ramsey, Natalie Watson, Logan Welsh, and Ethan Wiggins.
Good evening. What I did with this lesson was to help the children to understand and to sequence a story a little bit better, to help them to remember. We took the percussion instruments in order and added them to a story to help them with remembering what happened at the beginning, the middle, and the end of a story. As we did the percussion instruments, we decided that we needed pitched and non-pitched instruments to help us go up and down the stairs and to create different sounds along with the story. After the story, after I read it with them in the class and we used the percussion instruments, I had them build a stairway to help them to remember what happened at the beginning, the middle, and the end. I took these stair steps and they were all scrambled up. And as they replaced their rhythm instruments back on my stage, they would pick up a step and they had to remember what happened at the beginning, the middle, and the end. And that's how we kind of summarized our lesson. So what we're going to do is, we're gonna take the book, Mortimer, who is a little boy who has been put to bed but does not want to go to sleep. One night, Mortimer's mother took him upstairs to go to bed. When they got upstairs, Mortimer's mother opened the door to his room. She threw him into bed and said, "Mortimer, be quiet." Mortimer shook his head and said, "Yes, ma'am." Mortimer's mother shut the door and went back down the stairs. As soon as she got to the bottom of the stairs, Mortimer sang, "Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day. Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day." Mortimer's father heard all of that noise and came up the stairs. He opened the door and yelled, "Mortimer, be quiet." Mortimer shook his head and said, "Yes, sir." Mortimer's father shut the door and went back down the stairs. As soon as he got to the bottom of the stairs, Mortimer sang, "Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day. Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day." All of Mortimer's seventeen brothers and sisters heard that noise, and they came up the stairs. As they opened the door, they yelled in a tremendous voice, "Mortimer, be quiet." Mortimer shook his head and said, "Okay." The seventeen brothers and sisters shut the door and went back down the stairs. As soon as they got to the bottom of the stairs, Mortimer sang, "Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day. Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day." They got so upset that they called 911 to the police station. Two policemen came, and they walked very slowly up the stairs. They opened the door and said in deep, police-type voices, "Mortimer, be quiet." Mortimer didn't say a word. The policemen shut the door and went back down the stairs. As soon as they got to the bottom of the stairs, Mortimer sang, "Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day. Clang, clang, rattle, bing, bang, gonna make my noise all day." Well, downstairs, no one knew what to do. The mother got into a big fight with the policeman, and the father got into a big fight with the brothers and the sisters. Upstairs, Mortimer got so tired of waiting for someone to come up that he fell asleep. The end.
That was great. You guys did a great job. Thank you very much. Since I know that we do not have any additions and/or modifications to the agenda, we will move into recognitions. And at this time, I would like to call Brian Lepatic from the PCOSN Art League up. He is gonna be presenting some art teachers.
First of all, may I say you guys did an outstanding job. That was very nice. Thank you. Hi, I'm Brian Lepatic. First of all, let me say, it's an honor to represent the PCOSN Art League and our community, and the organization's always been a great stepping stone for those who want to achieve their art goals. And today, I'm here to make a presentation. Dr. Parrish and members of the school board, the PCOSN Art League is grateful to have the opportunity to thank and support the art teachers for all their hard work. We'd like to thank the school board for realizing the importance of supporting art education at all levels. We are so fortunate to have dedicated and talented art teachers in our schools. It has been the Art League's goal since the beginning in 1979 to promote and to support arts in the community. Some of the school programs we help organize were Art in a Suitcase and Festival of the Arts. Presently, the League sponsors the Student Art Show at the PCOSN Seafood Festival and awards them money and ribbons for their wonderful creations. We could not have this show without art teachers. They are the ones who inspire the children to be creative and produce wonderful works of art. They also help in setting up the displays. In addition to the Student Art Show, we also raise money for a $1,000 art scholarship we award to a deserving senior who wants to pursue his or her art career. I'd like to thank Paula Bennett for all of her help and for encouraging her students to participate. The quality of students' work is amazing, which is not only a credit to her, but to all the art teachers. I'd like to thank you for all your contributions from our raffles, the shows that we make, the shows that make it possible, and to encourage anyone who is interested in joining the Art League. As you know, your art teacher devote a lot of their extra time and funds in order to have a successful program. It is for this reason that the League would like to recognize the art teachers for their special talents they share with your children by presenting each school, the primary, elementary, middle, and high school, for a check each for $750 to be used in whatever way they feel is needed in their programs. Pass this to Dr. Parrish.
Actually, what we'll do is have the art teachers come up, because we do have some of them here, if you don't mind. Yes.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay. That would be great.
Okay, if we have, from PCOSN Primary, Helena Mulligan, from PCOSN Elementary, Marcel Fincher, from PCOSN Middle, Stephanie Thompson, and from PCOSN High, Marie Wilton, if you could come down, please.
Oh, we've got all four of you.
All four of you.
Thank you. I really appreciate your time and talent, and I'm sure that you guys will do wonderful things in the future. We're here to support you and the community. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
And thank you again to the PCOSN Art League. It's groups like yours in our community that provide so much important support to our schools, so thank you. At this time, I have the pleasure of assisting and recognizing a number of our students who have been successful in a variety of ways in recent weeks. What I'll start with is actually in the area of athletics, and I'd first like to start with wrestling. If Ross Graham could please come forward.
Ross Graham is a freshman at PCOSN High School. He won third place at the state wrestling competition. This year, he was undefeated in the district for the regular season and received a first place in the 152-pound weight category at the district level, and fourth place at regionals. Ross played JV football and is now going to be on the varsity team. Please join me in congratulating Ross Graham on his third-place win at state.
And Ross, with you being a freshman, I suspect we have many years to come of great success in wrestling. We look forward to it. At this time, Athena Suma, if she could come forward, please. Is she here?
Athena is a senior at PCOSN High School. She won second place in the 100-meter fly and third place in the 200 IM at the state swim competition. She's been swimming competitively year-round since she was five years old. She's been a member of the PHS swim team all four years of high school. Next year, Athena will swim at the University of Pittsburgh. She's interested in studying something math and science-related and possibly engineering. Please congratulate me, join me in congratulating Athena for her wins at the state swim competition.
And we're certainly sad to see you leave, but we do wish you the best of luck swimming in Pittsburgh. Next, I'd like to recognize somebody from our band. If Brandon Kuskalut could come forward, please.
Brandon is a junior at PCOSN High School. He was named third chair in the state for the All-Virginia Band and Orchestra. The All-Virginia Band will perform April 4 through 6 at Harrisonburg High School in Harrisonburg. Brandon had the highest score in the district for any instrument. He's president of the PHS International Club and principal trumpet in the Greater Richmond Youth Wind Ensemble, and a semifinalist in the National Trumpet Competition. Brandon plans to attend Virginia Commonwealth University to perform and to major in trumpet performance. Please join me in congratulating Brandon on his accomplishments.
Next, I'd like to invite Kirsten White, if she's here. Does Kirsten make it tonight? We will invite her back for another meeting. Jacob Schwarting, is he here? Great. Come on up, Jacob.
Jacob is a senior at PCOSN High School and was named a national finalist in the sports marketing category at the state DECA competition. Jake also plays football and lacrosse and spends a lot of time with his church doing missions. Jake plans to attend Liberty University to major in adventure leadership and outdoor ministry. Please congratulate, join me in congratulating Jacob on his accomplishment in the DECA state competition.
Zachary Seaver. We'll invite him back. Next, we have Chong Chong Lee.
Chong Chong is a sophomore at PCOSN High School and is a national finalist in the financial services category. He's enrolled in advanced placement honors classes and is consistently on the honor roll. He's involved in the Leo Club, the International Club, the Japanese Culture Club, Mu Alpha Theta, and the Spanish Club. Please join me in congratulating Chong Chong on his accomplishments with DECA. It's important to note that all four of the students who we mentioned tonight and recognized tonight are eligible to compete in the International Career Development Conference being held in Anaheim, California later in April, so hopefully we'll be bringing them back with some national recognition. Finally, our last student to recognize this year is Derek Wallace. Derek is an eighth grader at PCOSN Middle School and has been named a top-five finalist for the National Military Child of the Year Award, which recognizes outstanding military children who demonstrate resiliency, leadership, and achievement in their community. The award is given to an outstanding military child from each branch of service. Derek was selected from nearly 1,100 nominations. At school, he is a member of the yearbook and builders' clubs and plays junior-level baseball. His hobbies are Boy Scouts and watching pro sports. Derek's goals for the future are to get an advanced studies diploma, do well, and try out for the varsity sports teams. Please join me in congratulating Derek Wallace on this accomplishment.
I have to say, it's wonderful to see our students successful in such a wide variety of activities, so congratulations to all of you and thanks for joining us this evening.
And actually, we have one more bit of recognition. Dr. Parrish, if you could come forward, please. This is not public yet. That'll teach her to tell me to do with the information what I would like to do. What I would like to do. That's what she said. I found out in conversation with Dr. Parrish, in her humility, that the Virginia Association of State Superintendents has named her Superintendent of the Year. For the region, yes. Dr. Catalde. Very nice. Now, can you hold this while I read this?
I can.
You can? Bask in your glory. Look, the woman deserves it. She really does. I'm gonna read this. I got a couple of other things that I would like to say. PCOSN City Public Schools Superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Parrish, has been named the 2014 Virginia Association of School Superintendents, Region Two Superintendent of the Year. Each year, superintendents from school divisions across the state are nominated for one of eight regional titles. As a Region Two winner, Dr. Parrish will be considered for the Virginia Superintendent of the Year, an honor which will be awarded at the VASS Annual Conference May 5 through 8, 2013, in Roanoke. Region Two is comprised of 16 school divisions, and Dr. Parrish was selected for this award by her fellow school superintendents for her leadership and work on behalf of students in PCOSN City Public Schools, as well as her tireless efforts with state legislators and with other school districts across the state. Under her leadership as superintendent during the last five years, PCOSN City Schools have experienced significant progress despite challenging economic conditions, and we have had challenging economic conditions. Despite deep cuts to teaching staff, instructional programs, operations, administrative and support staff, and professional development, Dr. Parrish has maintained PCOSN's focus on excellence and kept all four schools performing among the highest in the state. Dr. Parrish's singular focus on students and instruction inspires staff, students, families, and the community, and we are indeed very proud of you and all that you have accomplished for PCOSN City Schools in five short years. Well done, Dr. Parrish. I'm almost done. I promise. Well, I thought it was important to say, when she told me this, and she said, "I'm not one to sing my own praises," which she's not. She's very humble in what she does. But I will say that it's easy to lead in good times. Everybody's fat and happy, and things are going great, and that's when it's not very challenging to be a leader. But I will say, the five years that she's been here, she has overcome challenge after challenge after challenge. She has shown wisdom. She has shown perseverance. She is just, you know, I've worked for a number of superintendents, and she is hands-down one of the best, if not the best. I can't say enough for the work that you do on behalf of the board. She makes our job really easy. She comes up to us with wonderful plans. But I talked with the president of VASS, and he was singing her praises, going on and on about what a wonderful job she does and how valuable she is to have on board. I also spoke with the mayor. He regretted not being able to be here. He is traveling, but he did send, on behalf of council, he wanted me to let you know that he was very proud of you and that the work that you and your staff do. He did not want this getting out because he doesn't want anybody coming trying to snag her from us. But Dr. Parrish, it is well-deserved, and we appreciate all your help and your work. This time, we'll take a short break.
Short break. So those flowers.
Thank you. This is the end.
Does anybody here like to comment on the budget? Right after, I'm a little frazzled, I'm sorry. Right after presentations and reports, that's what we'll do. All right, easy, easy down there. All right, we'll do financial update and Dr. Parrish will be providing that for us tonight.
Well, thank you, and first of all, thank you so much for the very surprising recognition this evening, so I'll probably be frazzled as well, if that helps. But I am, I'm going to do the financial update this evening. Mr. Bowen was unable to be with us because of some personal reasons, but I really want to just do a quick review of the budget for those of you that may be watching or hear that have not seen my budget presentation, which is online, and so the full presentation can easily be watched. But I just want to continue to remind the community, as certainly Mr. Carter referenced too, as he was speaking about the challenges we face, that we have cut almost $404.5 million in the last four budget cycles. So with my budget proposal, we've now added to that. As part of those $4.5 million in cuts, we've cut 46.5 positions. And to put that in context, we will have going into the next school year, 282 positions. So you can see what a large percentage it is. It is about a 15% cut in our staffing positions. Out of those 46.5, the majority of those did come from school board office staff, administration and support staff, but we have cut 19.5 teaching positions. I know folks are well aware of the fact that our enrollment has decreased, but we've actually cut 10 more teachers than we needed to for the enrollment decrease. So we've gone well beyond the enrollment decrease in these cuts because of the changing and the reduction of funding that we've seen in the last four years. And I want to again remind the community that in the last two budget cycles, we had to cut three different instructional programs, one at the middle school and two at the high school. When we met in the board work session last week, the board talked about some pie charts that we had shown in previous years, so we've reproduced those here. Because the reason, the major reason for us seeing the challenges that we're having is a result of the reduction in state funding. And as I thoroughly explained in my full presentation, the state has done large reductions in funding, and we understood why that happened during the recession, but we are now moving out of that, and the state in fact has additional revenue. Last year, there was a surplus, and we're anticipating at the end of this year that another surplus will be announced. But what you see here between fiscal year 2009, when the recession first hit, and based again on the current, the state budget that's been proposed by the conference committee for fiscal year 214, you see that our piece of the pie has gotten smaller. So in other words, back in fiscal year 2009, we had over 34% of the general fund, so that's the general fund that the state holds, was going to K-12 public education. Moving forward to this time, out of the general funds, we're seeing less than 30% at 29.83%. So our question to legislators in Richmond is, we understand that there's been a recession, we understand that everybody should see a reduction of funding, but what we don't understand is why our piece of the pie has gotten smaller. So the message that we get from that is that in fact, public school, K-12 education is just not the priority that it was as of fiscal year 2009. Another graph here that I think really shows that dramatically as well, again, it's looking at the general fund budget, and you see where we were in fiscal year 2009 and how far we've dropped in fiscal year 14. So it's important that we continue to talk to our legislators and tell them, if you believe it to be the case, that K-12 funding should be a priority for the state. Because the fact that our piece of the pie continues to get smaller out of the general funds that the state collects indicates that for those who are making the decisions, it simply isn't a priority. Now, just a reminder for my budget, we did move into the budget development process with a $700,000 shortfall. We had $127,000 in cost increases. This includes things like utilities, fuel, special education costs. Additionally, we saw a total revenue reduction of $296,000. As we remember, we put a portion of jobs bill funds into our operating budget for this year because we simply could not get through without that money being placed in it. Fortunately, our enrollment came in a little higher than we had projected, there was still a decrease of over 50 students, but it was less than projection, so we could move some of that ongoing funds into our budget, pull some of the jobs bill money out, but it did leave us with $87,000 of jobs bill funding in our budget. That was that one-time funding provided to us by the federal government a couple of years ago. Additionally, we're seeing a revenue reduction because of the fact that we are projecting an enrollment decrease of 62 students, so we're seeing over a $200,000 reduction of revenue as a result of that. So the third part is the total cost of the 2% raise. Many people are aware, the governor proposed a raise for what's called SOQ instructional positions only. The general assembly, once they came to meet and the conference committee finished their work, they are recommending funding positions that are not only instructional positions, but also support positions that are funded by the SOQs. The difference in the funding was the governor provided $104,000 to the raise, the conference committee provides $121,000 to the raise, yet it cost the school division $277,000 to do the 2% raise. So with those three added together, you see our budget shortfall of $700,000. Again, my presentation that is online and goes into detail actually talks about all of the budget cuts that we've made and the revenue increases, but what you see here is we've made another $303,000 in budget cuts. That's on top of the $4.5 million of budget cuts that we've made in the last four years. Now, we did generate revenue. Part of that is by asking our city to provide us with an additional $120,000. Fortunately, in the last three budget cycles, they provided us over a half a million dollars in additional funding. They've actually increased their funding by 6.09%, while the state has decreased their standards of quality funding by 20%. So our city is trying to offset some of the losses that we feel from the state, but they're just not able to offset all of that loss. But we greatly appreciate the support that they've continued to provide in the last four years, and I feel optimistic that they'll continue that support through this next budget cycle. We are also now going to charge athletic fees. Many school divisions across the state are doing this. Those fees range from $25 to $100. The budget proposal that I put out requests that fees would be charged at $60 per season, per athlete. We were very fortunate, and then we actually saw health insurance savings this year, which was rather remarkable with all the increased costs, but we did because we went out to bid. So we are now going to change insurance carriers. We used to use Optima, we'll be using Anthem next year, but Anthem actually gave us a 10% savings in health insurance, which actually enabled us to move $120,000 into the budget. And so that will make a difference for us, but we're going to work very closely with all of our employees to ensure the transition from Optima to Anthem goes smoothly. So again, the total cuts in the budget that we made this year were $303,000. What you see here too is this is now a $19.9 million budget. So when you're talking about making cuts of almost $5 million now, and your budget's only $19.9 million, you know how challenging those cuts are. Please recognize that we started our budget at over $22 million five years ago, so that you might think that you would see $17 million as a budget, but because we have gotten revenue from the state, especially last year for the VRS increases, but that was money that came right in the budget and flowed right out to pay VRS, so we didn't in fact get additional money to hire back teacher positions that we had cut, to buy instructional materials, or to do any of the things that we had cut out of the budget in the last few years. With the $303,000, we have actually made cuts of almost $5 million during five budget cycles. $5 million in five years, it's tremendous when you look at our budget. And what I have to say, because of those $5 million in cuts, is instruction is different for our students. It is negatively impacting our instructional program. You cannot continue to make those level of cuts and say that we're able to offer everything that we were able to offer five years ago. And I do think the more, the further we get into this cutting, if this continues into the next year or two, it's going to really begin to have a serious impact on what's going on in our classrooms. We are once again, as I mentioned, going to our locality, asking them to help us, because we are clearly not a priority in the state in terms of funding, so we're trying to see if we can get some assistance from our locality again. And again, this is a very shortened version of my presentation, so if you go online, right on the front page of our website, I've narrated the presentation, it is about 30 minutes in length, but you can stop it and come back to it if you like, but it is there. We are having some trouble with our TV channel right now, so we're not able to show it on that as of today, but hopefully in the near future, we'll get it up. That is my finance update for this evening. Are there any questions?
Anybody have anything? Thank you very much, Dr. Parrish.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into operations update with Mr. Pappas.
Good evening, Mr. Carter, or Dr. Parrish. In the area of maintenance, spring break is just around the corner, and that'll give my staff an opportunity to get into classrooms and do many of the things that they long to do, but can't do until the students and the faculty are on break. You may have noticed at Bradshaw Field, we're doing some maintenance there to take care of some longstanding problems. That should be rectified and completed this week. In the area of safety, we will be performing our building annual fire inspections, very thorough inspection of all of our buildings, in conjunction with our Pecoson Fire Department. As you may recall, this will be our second year of doing that, previously we did it with the state fire marshal. In the area of transportation, our spring bus evacuation drills will all be completed this week. Would have had one today, but it was raining, so we pushed that off till Friday. Food service, in the area of food service, to help our student customer satisfaction, we have been doing some food tastings in our dining rooms. And we found a few new products, and it helps to generate and reinvigorate the students and hopefully bring them back to the fold, if you will. We're also doing the same with faculty and staff. We now did some tastings, gave them some samples of some sandwiches that they can order that are adult size and will meet their needs. There's four new sandwiches and two specialty salads. So we hope that that works out for our benefit. In our work session, a board member asked about our loss of revenue. And currently, sales revenue is $60,000 this year off of what it was last year. It's 18.9%. We're working with Aramark, just as I stated earlier, with all the samples, to ensure that this doesn't impact our operating budget. And the decline in sales is mostly a result of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act and all the changes that we've had to enact with calories and whole grain breads and the like.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Pappas. And next up, we'll have the instructional update from Ms. Colley.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. It seems appropriate, given our presentation and recognition, to spend my time this evening highlighting some of the arts in Pecoson City Public Schools. And I'm sure that you know our schools are very busy with lots of arts events, but I'd like to draw your attention to just a few things in each of the schools this evening. And we've already seen how seriously the primary school takes integrating music and reading through both the first grade presentation earlier this year and the second grade presentation this evening. And we've been reminded through our wonderful invitations that the primary school is hosting its annual art show tomorrow evening, and I think that promises to be a wonderful evening for everyone. At the elementary school, the annual festival of the arts is scheduled for April 25th. Students will have an opportunity to show their own artwork all throughout the building, and they'll also be able to visit stations set up by local artists. A highlight for this evening will be beautiful handcrafted glazed and fired bowls created by the student council, and these bowls will be auctioned off that evening, and the proceeds will benefit the Peninsula Food Bank. If you look in just about any classroom at Pecoson Middle School, you'll find the arts being integrated into the core content areas. Recent examples include the production of a talk show on civil rights, tech ed t-shirt design and production, art and music through the ages and history class, and students cha-cha sliding to math translations. So ask Mr. Pirelli about those. During recognitions this evening, you heard about the success of the Pecoson High School Band. The choral groups are also finishing up their competition season this month, and later this spring, they'll be traveling to New York City where they will be able to sing, dance, and act their way through Broadway workshops with actual Broadway musical productions. The drama department is busy readying its spring production of the melodrama Sweeney Todd, and students are in charge of every aspect of this production, from advertising to stage design and acting. This year's production of Sweeney Todd is scheduled for May 2nd through 5th. I'd like to close by just reminding us all that research on the arts, learning in the brain, tells us that the arts belong in public education equal to other disciplines. I think Paul Allen, co-founder of Microsoft, agreed when he said, "In my own philanthropy and business endeavors, I have seen the critical role that the arts play in stimulating creativity and in developing vital communities. The arts have a crucial impact on our economy and are an important catalyst for learning, discovery, and achievement in our country." Thank you for allowing me to share a brief glimpse into some of the ways that arts are enriching the lives of our students and indeed in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody have questions, comments here? Thank you very much. Okay, now I would like to open this up to a public hearing, and does anyone wish to speak on behalf of the budget? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and Ms. Sidner, could you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, tonight's consent agenda consists of A, approval of minutes of February regular meeting and work session enclosed, B, approval of financial reports enclosed, C, approval of personnel action enclosed, and D, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
And Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Next, we'll move into matters for, other matters for consideration. First is consideration of approval of revision of the employee health benefits, which is enclosed, and do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
Great gift.
That was, that was, that was, came at just the right time, so that was great. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Next is consideration of approval of a resolution recommending Stevens Office Supply for VSBA Business Honor Roll. Dr. Parrish, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, this is something that we haven't done before, but Stevens Office Supply has been incredibly supportive of our schools. Not only have they provided funding that's enabled us to buy projectors to actually put in all classrooms at a couple of our schools, they've also donated furniture to us on numerous occasions. So their support of our school system, both through actual funding that's enabled us to put technology in the buildings, as well as actually donating items, has been tremendous. Most recently, too, they've been very busy donating through the Pecoson Education Foundation as well. So we thought it important that we recognize them, because VSBA, as you know, does do a business honor roll, and they seemed more than worthy to be placed on that honor roll, so.
Okay, and I would like to actually read this resolution. Be it resolved that we, the members of Pecoson City School Board and Superintendent, greatly appreciate the support provided Pecoson City Public Schools by Stevens Office Supply. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a critical role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Pecoson in Pecoson, Virginia on March 19th, 2013, hereby names Stevens Office Supply to the 2013 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support for this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best education we can for every child who attends one of our schools. And thank you very much to Stevens Office Supply. Do we have any, did, could we take a vote on that? Okay, yeah, let me have a motion, please, to approve the resolution for Stevens Office Supply.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Anybody? Throw something at you. Would anybody like to make a comment or anything? Yeah, I'm way off tonight for something.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that they're going to maybe get a copy of this resolution.
Yeah.
Maybe they're here tonight.
Yeah, well, actually, what we're going to do is I've already invited them to come to our next board meeting, so then we can give them a copy of the signed.
During the recognition.
But they are aware that they're being recognized this evening.
That's why you're Superintendent of the Year. You're way ahead of us.
Dragging us along.
For me, I'm your leader.
Hey, any other comments or questions or anything?
No, sir.
Now, Ms. McDowell, would you please call for a vote?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Do we have any public comments since the last time I asked you? Is that a no? Okay.
There's none.
Okay, great. I know somebody came in while I was, Dr. Parrish.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for recognizing me this evening. As you could probably tell, I was quite overwhelmed by it. But I have to say, I really, I give credit to everybody who works in our school system and to the community. I am just so fortunate to work here with such wonderful staff members and such supportive parents and community members, so to me, the honor goes out to everyone, not just me, but I do appreciate the recognition this evening. I did also want to thank staff for all their hard work on the budget that we brought forward to you last week and has continued to move forward. As you know, many hours of time were put into it, whether it was school board office staff or the assistants of principals, and I know at some point, they're just hoping I don't turn to them and say, okay, we have to cut again, but hopefully at some point that will turn around. But thank you to everybody, because we wouldn't be able to do it without all of that assistance. And again, I just want to highlight how fortunate we are tonight, I think, between the wonderful presentation that the students gave and the support of the art league and all of the recognitions that we're able to give to our students this evening really show how despite the many cuts that we've had to make, we still have students who are successful in so many areas, and we have so much support from our community that it really does make a difference for us, so. And I guess finally, what I'd like to say is we are less than two weeks away from spring break, the first week of April, so I do hope everybody has a very restful and relaxing spring break, because when we come back from that, we'll be very busy with SOL tests and AP tests and lots of work as we move towards the end of the school year, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jess?
Good evening and thank you, board. At the high school, thanks to the students and staff that made Spirit Week a success, the PTA made over $1,500 for their scholarship program with the faculty-student basketball game. That was a record. And at the Sadie Hawkins Day Dance and lunchtime activities were very successful. All spring sports teams are actively engaged in competition. PHS finished in third place in the Get It Together Seat Belt Challenge. And congratulations to the high school Islander Band for receiving a superior rating with a perfect score this past Wednesday. With this award combined with a superior rating at the Fall Marching Assessment, our band will receive the Virginia Honor Band Award for the seventh time. At the middle school, eighth graders completed the writing SOLs last week. All students are currently taking their 27-week tests. Please go online for the schedule. Freestyle pictures will be taken on Tuesday, April 9th, and the seventh grade spring musical is Thursday, April 18th at 7:00 p.m. There will be an Earth Day Dance for PMS students on April 19th from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., and Spring Picture Day is April 24th. At the elementary school, they earned $3,500 for Jump Rope for Heart. On February 28th, the elementary school also held its first family math night, where parents and students enjoyed participating together in math activities like those the students and teachers work on in class in preparation for the SOL tests. This past Saturday, Gwen Wood, Jacob Weibel, Sarah Stephen, Dana Howard, and Hope Swindler represented the elementary school at the Regional Battle of the Books Competition held in Williamsburg. These students, along with Charlotte Patterson and Iris Lemon-Duper-Mercer, committed many hours this year to reading the 15 books on the Battle of the Books reading list, as well as attending before-school early morning practices for the last three months in preparation. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Pecoson Education Foundation and all those that contributed to a very successful dinner dance fundraiser that was held earlier this month. Thank you.
Really enjoyed the reading with percussion, thought that was awesome this morning, this evening, and just had a question, did I not hear about OM? Do we have any OM teams next week?
It's this weekend.
This weekend is OM at Menchville High School?
Yes.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure we got that word out.
Awesome.
Congratulations, Dr. Parrish.
Thank you.
Ms. Whitaker?
I would like to echo Ms. Wilson's congratulations to Dr. Parrish. We're very fortunate to have you here, and you're excellent staff, they really are wonderful. And also, great for the kids being here. I recognize some of them from Little League, which actually starts, Pecoson Little League starts this Saturday, and I look forward to seeing some of those kids on the ball field and running those bases and having a good time. Thanks.
Mr. Mel?
I certainly agree with Ms. Colley on the arts and how important they are to our community, something that as we, as we look at our monies and we budget, that we don't forget that that's very important to development of our children, and it looks like, it appears that Ms. Powell and Mr. Spruill will have plenty of mallet percussion players coming to the band in the next couple of years. And I personally will try to get out to the Pecoson Primary School tomorrow night and see, and look at the artwork and see if I can hear some bluegrass. So they've got a little concert thing and a bake sale going on, so I think it's a deal.
Very good. Mr. Cast?
I'd just like to say congratulations to Dr. Parrish, and if other school systems come calling, I have some boys that would like to talk to them.
Okay, great. Ms. Sidner?
I'd like to report that Dr. Parrish and I attended the Heretta Educational Advisory Committee meeting today at WHRO, and I would like to mention that in addition to all the updates we got on the various WHRO programs, Dr. Staples, the director for the Virginia Association of School Superintendent spoke, and he spoke about implications of pending education bills, and in particular, he spoke about the grading system and the if you fail or if you have or are not accredited, that the takeover from the state. It was very sobering, and Dr. Parrish, congratulations, but there are many challenges out here, as it is working its way through legislation. I think it's halfway there, so unfortunately, there are many challenges like that ahead, and thank you for all the work.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm afraid to talk, but Dr. Parrish, I would like for you to know that everybody on the board and everybody at school board office was behind getting everything together for you tonight, and I was drafted when I got here to read the whole thing, so anyway, congratulations. It was hearing, it was nice hearing the good things about you and having the opportunity to work with you, and it's just, it's, it's good. Like I said up there, you really make our job easy, you come to us with a good plan, and I know there are other people behind you, and that, you know, it takes all the cogs and the gear to make the whole thing spin, but you are the head of it, and I think the recognition is just.
Thank you.
And well deserved. And with that, I think we will go into, where are we, any material for board review?
Not this evening.
Okay, and I will gladly adjourn this meeting.